Good evening and welcome to the June 26th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in attendance with us tonight and those of you that might be watching at home on television, we're glad to have you tuned in. We are honored tonight with two young ladies to lead us in our pledge, Tiffany Struville, the new principal at Black Fox Elementary, and also Cherry Robertson, the new principal at Reeves Rogers, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence. Ladies?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, members of the board, you have seen the agenda. I'll ask you to approve the agenda with one exception. We need to move Policy 4.201 away from the consent items and move it down to the action items for some discussion on that policy. So with that in mind, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications?
Good evening. I would like to start the communications with the announcements that you received a little bit earlier that we're welcoming Nina Bowie as the Assistant Principal for Bradley Academy, and then Erin Phillips, who is the Assistant Principal for Case and Lane Academy. So we welcomed those two ladies to our team. And then continuing on, for the past couple of years, Instruction Partners, which is an organization that facilitates educator learning across Tennessee, has held professional development boot camps throughout the summer. This year, the following members of the Murfreesboro City Schools family went through a rigorous selection process and were chosen to teach sessions at various boot camps being held across the state. So those educators are Sonia Cox, Ginger Hasselbaker, Gail Boyd, Kenesha Sullivan. They were all chosen to lead math sessions. Cherry Ross was chosen to lead informational text, and Taylor Brown was selected to lead English Language Arts Sessions. Also this year, Murfreesboro City Schools applied and was chosen to host one session of the boot camps. So last week, from Tuesday through Friday of last week, Overall Creek welcomed about 170 educators each day from across the state. The media specialist, Kristy Honey, was the lead from Overall, and she made everything work. It was a nice, smooth week, so we want to say thank you to her and to Angie Tremel for really stepping forward for Overall Creek. Again, this is a real honor for us not only to be teaching across the state, but having state teachers come to us. Congratulations to Hobgood Elementary, you may have already seen this in the news, for receiving first place in the public elementary category during the Rutherford County Main Street Awards, which is sponsored by the Murfreesboro Post. So we're really proud of Hobgood and their team. Bradley also had a team who walked in the Juneteenth Parade that was on the 16th of June honoring the 100th anniversary of Bradley Academy. Those who gained their extra steps on the 16th included Greg Lyles, Stephanie Turner, her two daughters came out with her, Stephanie Davis, Ryan Palumbo, Grace Benedek, Chad Thomas, and Kathy Waldecker. We all joined together to walk from Central to Bradley Museum. I want to give a good shout out to the students from Case and Lane and Discovery, who both had teams going to the National Beta Club Convention. There were 12,000 competitors and only top finishers at the state level were invited to compete at the Nationals. So we had to compete state, they were invited to Nationals, and would like to say congratulations to Kell Belcher at Case and Lane, who won third place in the Digital Visual Arts Division, and also to the following Discovery School students. Advertising Design Team, the first place was Embria Green, Lila Wiley, Ada Vance, and Elekate Harris. During the Quiz Bowl, they got fifth place in the Nationals, Rhett Shaw, Benjamin Elfersee, Henry Ambrose, and Cannon Murphy. Fifth grade math, sixth place, Tocaya Pawlowski. Fifth grade science, fifth place was Griffin Mentor. Fourth grade social studies, third place is Ellie Gardner. Fourth place, fourth grade math, second place was Rachel Sackord. Also, book battle, they've gotten the top 20 nationally, Andrew Smith, Ansley Thornton, and Ada Vance. So congratulations to all of those students for representing Murfreesboro City Schools and for coming out not only as state winners, but really placing in those Nationals as well. I don't want to forget woodworking design, I apologize. Cannon Murphy represented Tennessee with his state's second place win, and he was one of 25 entries in the National Woodworking Design Competition. We also had the Mexican folk dancers come out, performed for ESP students during the International Folk Fest. This is an annual tradition that is led by our community outreach team. It was fabulous experience for the students, as well as all the families that came out and participated. We also want to inform you that MTSU has received a grant for Spark to Read. It's an after-school activity program for minority and socio-economically disadvantaged children to help show that physical activity can strengthen learning and brain-body connections. Two schools in Hickman County, two in Megs, three in Benton, two in Sullivan, and three in Murfreesboro will be involved in this. Our thanks to MTSU and Cynthia Chafin and Don Morgan of the Center for Health and Human Services for thinking of us and including us in the grant. This will be partnership with the ESP program and Read to Succeed. Murfreesboro Education Association will host a forum of school board candidates on Friday, June 29th, from 6 until 8:00 p.m. at the central office of Murfreesboro City Schools. And the League of Women Voters will be hosting a city school board and city council candidate forum on Monday, July 16th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. The forum will be live and you can watch it on City TV, or you can see it on streaming on YouTube or Facebook. Any questions? That was a lot.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. And as you discussed about the forums coming up, I do want to take just a minute and address Cogger and also Nancy, and tell you both how much we have appreciated and enjoyed working with you on the board, and being that you're not seeking reelection, but we will certainly keep you in our mind, and I'm sure you'll keep us in your thoughts, and we will wish you the best in whatever, Nancy, with the city council election, and Cogger with...
Whatever I want to do. Gee, what will I do on Tuesday night?
You'll miss it for a while.
Move to your television.
Yeah, exactly. But my Facebook Live is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Do I have a motion then to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Vaneer. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballot. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, under action items, do we want to take Policy 4.201 first? We've added that to the action items, so Dr. Gilbert?
Okay. The request on this particular policy is that we add in our mission statement, and so I'm recommending that in line 15, where it says "The course of study shall include those subjects and topics required by state and federal laws and regulations," I'm recommending that we have "The course of study shall reflect the board's mission of assuring the academic and personal success of each child and shall include those subjects and topics required by state and federal laws and regulations."
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept this policy on this reading as has been amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your second item is an agreement that we entered into every year with Mid-Cumberland Head Start. There really is no change in this in the past years, but we do need board approval for this place.
I have one question. When you get down to, I'm looking for it. All right, page five. Just for information, it says reimbursement provided for 140 eligible children, but then on down within that paragraph, it also says that if there are others that need to be added or included in this program, now will that still be of the same budget item, or will there be money coming back because we may add any students at all?
And Mr. Anderson, you may have to answer this one, but the way this works is our children who are in our volunteer pre-K program are those who are our neediest children. And what this agreement does is sets aside and said that, says that we will work with Head Start to identify those children. The amount that we've had, Mr. Anderson, I believe is 13, 333.20 per month, right, for those children?
Yes, ma'am. We have never gone over the amount, so that has never come into play.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve the partnership?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Vaneer. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, the rest are yours.
The next, the next item is Assurity Bond for the Finance Director. That is a state of Tennessee requirement that, that the Finance Director be bonded in the amount specified, $1,508,900. It's a formula that they use to determine that. The cost to the district is $1,580 per year, and it is a state requirement, something we have to do every year.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Have a second?
I have a question.
All right, let me get a second first, Wiz.
Okay, I'll second it then.
Okay. Now your question.
My question is, I may have missed it. What's our fee for the bond?
$1,580.
Renewal premium.
Okay.
Premium.
I did miss it. There you go. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we've had a motion and a second. We've had questions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next item?
Next item is approval of revised 2018-2019 budget, and I need to walk you through this. You had given out tonight a packet of information for you that's, that has the, that has everything in it that we need to talk about. If we could go to the, my memo that I wrote first to you, that was in your, in your information that we sent out. Basically, what has, what has occurred is that under state law, we have to, our, our budget has to match what the city council has approved. In other words, the funding bodies' numbers have to match with the, with the district. There were some changes from what you had approved as the, as the school board body as we sent to city council, and there were a few changes in that. During this time, we also went back, since our budget is developed in March, we went back and looked at all the potential expenditures and revised some of the anticipated money that we're going to use. And those are listed, I gave you some examples of some, like natural gas. We originally projected we would spend $330,000, and yet we now think it'll only be $300,000. Textbooks, we had $300,000, and it was, ended up that we only spent 203. Evaluation and testing, and I won't read all those for you, but those show you just some of the examples of the savings, which ends up going to our fund balance line. If you remember when we did our budget, we had a capital outlay sheet that showed how much would come into our operating budget and how much we were going to ask the city to fund. We asked for a write at $1 million for the city to fund in capital outlay. They were not able to do that in their budget this year, so we had to make some other adjustments. The council approved operat, additional operating funds for us this year, which goes into our operating budget, our general purpose budget. It wasn't put into capital outlay, which means it's in there to stay, which means under the, under the state law, they cannot now reduce that amount, and, because we have a maintenance of effort concern. We, the increase was $1,265,000, but today I received an email that said we, they, they reduced it to 225, so really that number should be $1,275,103. They kept the 103 in there as well. So we didn't change this, but we did change all the numbers you have in your book. It's been changed to reflect that. Sorry, I missed it on my memo to catch that. So that money goes into our general purpose operating budget. We also received information on Friday, and we've known, the governor has announced this, that there's going to be state funds for safe schools initiatives, but we finally got an idea of how much money that's going to be. So on the second page of the memo, the estimate, and these are estimates from the state, this is not the final number, these are estimates, that we would receive an additional $231,490 for one-time safety-related expenses, and $92,600 for recurring state funds. Now, the difference of that is, is the one-time expenditure means we're going to get that money this time to do some major things that we need to do for safety. The 92, 92,600 will be recurring, which means it'll be in the BEP formula from now on.
Excuse me, just, where are you reading from?
In your memo, the letter.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a letter.
It's not in that packet.
It's online.
Oh.
Sorry, I printed mine, that's why.
Yeah, it's, it's what I sent you on, in your board packet.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
There's, there's two things that we have to meet in the budget requirements from the state. One is maintenance of effort, which by the city adding additional funds, by us having additional revenues put in there for sales tax and property tax, we've covered maintenance of effort. The other one is fund balance minimums. Our whole concern was the fund balance minimum issue. Because we have gone back and looked at all of the original projection of expenditures versus what we now think we'll spend, and because of this extra money from the state, we have covered that concern as well. The, there's, there's two different sheets that I wanted to show you. One is the budget amendment sheet, and the other is the fund balance sheet. If we could go through the budget amendment sheet, I'll explain the amendments we have to make in our current budget to satisfy what we're doing. The first one is revenues. We showed in there, you'll see an increase in the revenues where we increased the amount that the state is giving us for the safe schools. We've increased that, so that covers us on additional revenues that are coming in. When you go to expenditures, the next category is student support services, special ed. That is just because the state, the state asked us to change the way we are recording money that's coming in to another, to a, to a contract category, rather than doing it as other charges. So it's, it's money in, money out, is no change in numbers, it just changed what line item it was on. Same exact amount of money, we just adjusted it for the state. Administrative support, Board of Education. The last one, we moved legal services over from a salary line where we had it as salary, and we moved it over to a legal services line after discussions we've had with the city government. The next area is capital outlay. This is where we did the majority of our movement to make this budget work for you. And what it is, is changes to the capital outlay, what we did was, we had asked the city to fund three buses, two regular ed buses and one special ed bus. When the city said, "We can't, we can't fund any of the capital outlay, we have to have those buses." We had to retire those buses under state mandates because of their mileage. I've talked with transportation, and they said, "We can get by this year with one regular ed bus and one special ed bus, knowing full well when we open up a new school, we're going to need more buses." We have two spare buses in regular ed, we were wanting a third bus as a spare. What we do is we take our newer buses and run them, and take our older buses and make them into the spare buses. We won't have that ability to make that extra spare, but we, hopefully they won't break down. So we typically run with three, we're going to have to run with, with two to get started on spares. We should be okay.
Mr. Settles?
I'm sorry, they're still within the mileage requirement? The spares?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, the buses we're retiring now are buses that we extended two additional years when the law changed. Fortunately, being a city system, we don't have a tremendous amount of mileage like county school districts do, because it's all pretty much condensed. Our, our miles are rough miles because they're stop and go, stop and go, but we don't have long distances, so that, that helps us on that. So those are the budget amendments that make up this budget. The next page I wanted to go over with you is the fund balance, so you'd see how this all works out now, so you'll know that we satisfied that. It says fund balance analysis for general purpose budget. At the end of the 1617 school year, that's last year, we ended up with a fund balance of $4,793,854. We do not expect to contribute any money back to the fund balance, but we expect that we're going to need fund balance to balance the 1718 budget, and that's reflected there of $1,081,000. Estimated fund balance at the end of 201718 is going to be $3,712,000. So you can see, we've had to use some money to fund our budget for this year to get to that point. Now, the fund balance estimate based on current proposed budget is we're going to need for this next school year to use $945,000 of that, and the estimated fund balance at the end of 201819 is $2,766,997. The state required amount is we have to have 3% of expenditures, or we have to have $2,397,197. Therefore, we're going to be to the good $369,800, which means we satisfy the state's requirement for fund balance. What you need to know from that is that little asterisk down there, it says $324,000 of that is money that is committed to safe schools. Now, we haven't, the state hasn't accepted any grant information yet. In other words, we can't even submit it yet. So we don't know how we're going to be spending that money yet. So we just said, just understand, board, we've got to reserve that for the safe schools grants. It will give us the opportunity to take some of the things on our capital outlay and move it to that grant, which will help us out in the long run. But we had to play, had to move stuff around to get there. So I just didn't want you to think, oh, wow, we got that much extra money now. We don't. It's $324,000 of that is committed to something that the state's giving us through grant funds. Okay?
So basically, we're looking at about $45,000.
Yeah, we were at $10,000 before, but we had to do some, the next sheets, when I show you the capital outlay, you'll see what we did to make it work, so you'll, so you'll meet the budget requirements. The next sheets are these colorized sheets of the capital outlay.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Settles?
So I want to understand correctly, the $369,800 is inclusive of what we're anticipating from the state for the safe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They've told us we're going to get that money. We filed our first section of it, and we're, we can't file the other part until July, I forget the date.
It's mid-July. We're, we're going to work on writing it probably next week.
So we don't have this right now. We're waiting for it.
Well, they tell us we're going to get it. It's just, we have to file paperwork and tell them how we're going to spend it.
But we don't have to like cross our fingers or light a candle or anything?
No, we're going to, we're going to get the money. It's, it's just a matter of how, the state wants to know, they had us jump through a bunch of hoops. We had to go do surveys of every school campus, we filed all that paperwork, we filed all of our, our emergency plans, we have filed our, where they do the fire drills, etc., we filed all that stuff. The piece that the state hasn't done yet and won't do until mid-July is the piece on how are you going to spend this money? So we haven't been able to file it yet, so we don't even know yet. But they said, this is, they get, they sent the numbers to us. It's not just we made them up, they sent these numbers to us.
So we really only have $45,000, basically?
Right. Where that, yes, sir. But state is concerned with the budget number, not after you do the budget, not after you submit it. They're concerned with what you send them upfront, not how you spend it later. So that's, that's kind of an interesting way the state views all this, is that. So as long as we satisfy their initial concern about, about the fund balance amount and about the maintenance of effort, we're good. Okay? See, the budget we approved previously, we only had $10,000 left. So we've actually did, but we had to make some, some changes, and I was going to go through those with you on this sheet now. All right, capital outlay.
Before you go, I just, one more question about the, okay, so the fund balance at 3%, that 2.3 million or 2.4 million?
Uh huh.
All right, we're not going to encroach upon that any with what you just explained.
No, we'll have that amount of money available, be, I mean, that's what's going to be our fund balance at the end, yes.
So for whatever happens, we're still keeping an eye on, we've got to maintain the 2.4 million in reserve to meet the state audit?
You, you don't have to, you can go down to zero once the year starts, and it's a cash flow issue. Our cash flow goes like this all year long. It's a cash flow issue, and they only care about the starting point, because they know with the cash flow, the way money comes into districts, we have times where we really are tight on money. And like right now, we have cash right now because we're getting ready to head through the rest of the summer, but in the, towards October, November, December, we're, we're really tight on cash, and that's why you have to have a fund balance, and that's why they say you have to have that. So it's, can we go, yes, we can spend below it. It's what you start with and what you end with is what they can't care about.
Thank you.
Okay, the capital outlay request sheet, the far right-hand column is what we requested from the city. Every one that's labeled in red are the ones that we asked to be funded this year. Just the red ones. We didn't ask for, to fund the white ones, the white blocks, just the red blocks, and they said they, they could not afford to fund any of those this year. If you look on the second page, the transportation line, you'll see two blue arrows with the red blocks pointing over to us. We moved that money into our capital outlay, meaning we got to have the buses. And I added in for one bus in regular ed and one bus in special ed, so we reduced the request down from two buses to one. So that's how we got that into ours. Anything that's a green box or highlighted in green through the requested items, those are, those are ones that we originally had asked for, that we say we really got to have. Anything with an orange color, that means we got to have it, but we reduced the request by doing some things, like reducing a bus, or transportation said they could do without the Zoner GPS system, they'll use the current system they have now. That one is dying out, meaning they're not supporting it anymore, so we're going to have to make sure we keep it going this year, and then we do need to change it next year. Cuomo boards at Overall Creek, they purchased two of their own, so we only needed to buy three instead of five. They had the money for that. The two things we knocked out was redoing the gym floor at Black Fox and Northfield, and we have hopes that when we get the capital outlay money for the safety, and I haven't discussed this with Dr. Gilbert, but that could be considered in my mind a safety item of the gym floor being slippery or something like that. So we'll, we'll, we'll work on it, Linda, we'll work on it.
I think that might be a stretch, Mr. Anderson.
Stretching.
I don't think I can write that in the grant that way. I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
They're asking you to put it in the grant.
Oh.
But those are the two things we knocked out. Then you see the three things we reduced the expenditures on. So that actually increased our capital outlay expense that we, we would pay for. So remember, there's no additional capital coming from the city. It's all money moved into ours. By doing that, we end up with our overall budget actually having to increase because we had to take over some of the money that we had asked, asked the council for. And so if you go to your cover sheet on revenues and expenditures, our budget actually did go up a little bit. Look at the middle column where it says twenty eighteen nineteen budget. Our budget is now at seventy-nine million nine, nine hundred and six thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. It did increase somewhat. But, I'm sorry for the length of the discussion, but all this stuff makes our budget balance and be able to get past the state requirements. It matches with what the city has said they fund, and so we should be in good shape moving forward. Any other questions?
Is, is there any possibility on some of these items that we had requested the city to fund? Is there any possibility that we will have money anywhere to do the things that they are not doing at the present time?
There's, there's always the possibility in the maintenance budget, if we find out that we're, we're not having to do a lot of repairs. We never know what we're gonna run into with repairs and maintenance on air conditioners, etc. If we don't have to do a lot, there's always that possibility. We don't like to state it upfront because we don't know for sure what's gonna happen during the school year. And we're going through, the heat right now is a very critical time on our equipment. Refrigerators do not like two times of the year, the hottest day and the coldest day. So we're worried about that.
I'm, I'm just a little concerned about the playgrounds at Mitchell Nielsen.
That's exactly what I was.
And I, I know they've been knocked out according to our color code, so I guess, of course, that's a.
It's five hundred thousand dollars what they're talking about on there. That's a big, that's a nice playground.
For Mitchell Nielsen, Mitchell Nielsen's playground is really, really old, and we were trying to totally redo the whole thing.
Wanted to move it.
Wanted to move it.
Off of that corner, I think.
We do wanna move it, but some of that equipment's too old to move, so we would have to replace it with new equipment.
Scrap it.
So it would, it would take four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do it the way that we projected to do it. Am I correct on that?
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Five hundred thousand.
Two separate elementary and primary.
It's a total of over five hundred thousand.
Okay, okay. Or both of them.
Would, would take over a half a million dollars. The primary's in better shape than the elementary is.
Do we have any idea what's gonna happen with the fire hall on Jones Boulevard once they move?
I haven't heard what, what the status of that is, no, sir.
Not yet.
That could, that could be used as a building with city schools, couldn't it?
As a matter of fact, it could.
I'd hate to split those camp, that campus again, but.
As a matter of fact, what? It could be, could be. Look at that smile on her face.
I could, I think it could be too. Anyway, okay, all right.
Well, can we, I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, I got Ms. Smith first.
Probably gonna say the same thing. Five hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money for a playground. Is there any way to reduce our goal of the equipment and still, I totally agree, every time I drive by that Mitchell Nielsen, that is a safety issue. So, could we use some of the safety money? Could we move it and still not spend that kind, that's a, that's a lot of money.
It is. One piece of equipment costs between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars for the real elaborate pieces. The ground, if you look at the replacement of the rubber surface at the schools that we're not gonna do, just take scales, playground rubber surface, a hundred fifty thousand dollars just to replace the rubber surface.
But don't rubber stuff, can you not? I thought you were getting off of that.
We're not, we're gonna go with, we're not gonna put rubber down anymore, except to replace the schools that already have rubber. We're gonna go with the mulch.
The rubber surface.
A lot of school districts are going to that.
Yeah, I thought we were getting over that.
Yeah. When, when you have the, the sun shining, now where it doesn't shine on it, if it's shaded, it's not too bad. We had even considered, when we did casing, we even looked at what it would cost to, to pull all that up. But you have to get all the concrete and everything up, so it really was impossible. Right now, if, if you, if we had to prioritize playgrounds, I would have to prioritize scales and pitter because of that rubber surface, which is a problem, because what happens is the rubber surface starts to come up and then you get trip hazards. And it's a real, it's a real problem. I, I would not advise anybody ever putting a rubber surface down.
Right. So I knew, so I knew we were getting off of the rubber surface thing, but if we could still move the playground and use the wood chips, it just seems like this is a Rolex when we might need a Timex.
In our experiences, moving a piece of playground equipment costs us one-half the cost of new equipment. So it's not worth moving thirty-four.
No, no, that equipment, do not move, that, that equipment that is on Jones Boulevard that they're playing on should be moved off-site.
To the garbage.
Yeah, exactly. So.
We can look at, you know, putting a piece here and there. We wanna, we wanna find a good spot away from where it is now, on the backside of the school or the side of the school. We don't want it where it is, under those trees by the road there. I don't know, Dr. Gilbert, do you have any ideas about what we can do on?
I had talked, I had talked with Ms. Newell, and my, my goal would be, and I would have to find out when the city's gonna do it, but I wish we could just redo that whole front and make a parking lot there and move the playground to the back whenever the city works on Jones Boulevard. But I, I don't know what the timeline is on that. But that, to me, would be an ideal time to, to take care of that, if it's gonna be any time soon. I was actually, I was actually talking with the company today about the possibility of a grant. I don't know whether that'll come through. It would not cover that amount of money, but it would be probably about seventy-five thousand. So I'm, I'm pursuing that now. But, again, it's, it's an issue. I mean, the capital outlay is an issue, because it's, it's very difficult to, to maintain what we have and, and in the condition that we want it maintained and not spend money on it.
Okay. Other questions? Ms. Renier?
Since this has been on our wish list, per se, for the last several years, is there any way that we can make a commitment right now and say that, you know, next year budget-wise, this has to be a priority as well as the other two that need to remove the rubber? I mean, we know that's a safety issue. We've talked about it till we're blue in the face, and we still aren't doing anything about it.
That's right. I, I think, I think certainly we can make it a priority. I think that's what we did this year. I think it depends on where we are as far as, and where the city is as far as money, because we're also looking at starting a new school next year, and we're looking at new technology that we have to have. And that's, that's gonna be a major expense. But our computers will be five years old next year.
Five years, yeah.
And while, while the, the teaching staff, if you think about classroom teachers, will be able to shift teaching staff from casing and from scales and from overall. And by the way, thank you council for the land, because it's in a perfect spot. But you're still dealing with another media center person. You're still dating, dealing with two music people. You're dealing with a psychologist. You're dealing with councilor. You're dealing with all those extras. You're dealing with an administrative staff that has to come on board.
Mr. King?
Have we, have we ranked these items by list of priority? So like for the next budget, we come along, we can say, "Here, here are the things we want to accomplish, first, second, third. If we could get to them, that'd be great." But that kinda goes to Ms. Renier's point, you know, we could, let's say, what, what are we considering important, and we just rank these? Have we, have we done that?
The things in red were the ones that we had ranked this year. All these other ones listed there, it's like, it's like eight million, over eight million dollars in capital outlay needs that we're gonna have over the years. And so, the reds were the ranked, ranked ones. Now, if you're talking about ranking them even further, you know, we, we could do that.
Okay. What's left over?
But we do have a new school to open, and that's, our experience again, is a million and a half dollars to open up a new school, just additional money, just to open the doors, plus utilities expenses, plus then you need buses. That's just personnel and getting stuff in the school. Plus, we need the computers, and the computers can be anywhere from, depends on what we end up recommending we go with, as, as what Dr. Gilbert wants us to do. But, you know, that'll be another three, four million right there. So, it's gonna be very heavy lift for everybody next year.
All right, Ms. Smith?
Would it be cheaper in the long run for us to, on the rubber surface, because we will repeatedly have to keep reinstalling it over the years, for us to bite the bullet and remove the, the infrastructure for it?
We've actually considered doing that. The, the rubberized surface holds up anywhere from ten to fifteen years, and then it totally breaks down. When a rubberized surface is built, the surface area and where the equipment sits is at a certain height. When you go and put mulch in, you have to remove all the concrete that's up underneath it. You have to reset every piece of equipment to a different height, because you have to drop it down now, because if it's, now it's flush with the top of the concrete. So every piece has to be moved. So you're gonna spend a lot of money on removing stuff that you could spend, again, at least fifty percent of the cost of a total program to do it.
Do you still have the estimates, Gary, on Casey Lane when we checked on that? If, if you do, and I don't know whether you do or not, or whether I do, I'd have to look for it, but I think it would be, it might be interesting for the board to see that, because that's something we looked at. I know.
I know Mr. Wilfred looked at that. I, I don't have the number off the top of my head, how much that is.
Okay. I'll, I'll see if I can find that.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion then to approve the budget as revised? That's what we need to do at this point in time.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, under reports and information, I'm, like I said, this is, Gary, I'm turning the rest of this over to you, but the reports of meals served and also the revenue and expenditure, if you would please.
Meals served, we put together a list of how many meals the cafeteria staff has served this year. And as you can see, they served student lunches, one million one hundred and fifty-one thousand lunches, one million one hundred and eighty thousand breakfasts this past year, supper meals, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, summer meals, our summer meal program, six, almost seventy thousand meals in the summer. And you can see holiday visitors, adult visitors, and staff meals that were served, for a total meals of two million seven hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and seven meals that the food service department served to our students, staff, visitors during the year.
Ms. Renier?
I think that we need to just thank Sandy Shealy and all the cafeteria managers for pulling this off. This is a big deal. I don't think I've ever seen this list before, and if, if so, I certainly don't remember two-point-seven and a half million.
That's the most we've ever had, obviously, as our numbers go up, and Sandy is extremely aggressive in going into the community with summer feeding program. I can remember ten years ago, we were, we were feeding fifteen, twenty thousand meals, and now we're up to, you know, seventy, seventy thousand meals. So it's grown quite a bit. There's other news that we have for you. If you remember, we talked about the community eligibility program, that five of the schools were going to have to go off that plan. Well, Ms. Shealy came to Dr. Gilbert and me and said, "I want you to consider something." I said, "Okay." So she says, "I can add back a school that's right on the edge of being off, being off of it because of the numbers. It'll cost, it'll cost the budget about twenty thousand dollars in expenses, but I can add them back for four years of free breakfast and lunch." So I guess you can get the answer that Dr. Gilbert gave to that, is to add that school back. And so, we're going to add that school back, so they can continue to receive their free breakfast and lunch meals, which means that with only four of the schools wouldn't, and that school is Casey Lane Academy, that'll be added back to that program.
That is good news. That's great.
So, again, thank Ms. Shealy for, she, she's bothered when we don't feed kids. She really is. So she started digging through all her numbers and did her projections and said, "We can still do this for these kids. It'll cost our budget twenty thousand, but they're in a good place right now to do it."
Thank you to her.
Very good. Ms. Renier?
Have the, have the parents of the other four schools already been notified about having to now pay for breakfast and lunch? Because I've had parents asking me about it.
Yes, we, we sent, I believe we sent letters home and then also did an all-call, didn't we, Lisa?
Yes.
Before school was out. So we'll be doing an all-call. In fact, it's scheduled to go out tomorrow afternoon to the Casey Lane parents.
Good. That's great. Again, thank you to Sandy Shealy.
Revenue and expenditure report?
Okay, revenue expenditure report, we're at the ninety-one point six percent of the year. We only got one more month after this one to report. It goes through May thirty-first. Our net income is four million three hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars. As I said, we go through the ups and downs, and now is when we have the cash, because we have to cover payroll, because we don't get any more money from the state for a few months. So we have to make sure we have enough to cover everything. On the revenue side, we're at ninety-one point four percent of revenue projections. Have the ninety-one point six, where we, you know, where we could be last year. At this time, we were at ninety point one. So, we still don't have in here the amount of money that we'll get for our additional growth. Remember, the state pays growth in two payments. We don't know that number yet. They haven't told us yet, and we won't know that until the last week of June or the first week of July. And then we'll have to bounce it back into the budget. And on our expenditure side, we're at eighty-two point nine. Last year, at this time, we were at eighty point eight. Again, the extra expenditures, of course, are because of the extra students and the extra personnel. We needed to cover those. That's where we are.
All right, any questions? Mr. King?
I noticed on the revenue side, other county revenue, line three, is down ten percent. Other local revenue is down fifty percent compared to where we were. Now, right now, in this, and, and that is line four, other local revenue. Now, this year, we're at a hundred and three point one percent effective, but compared to last year, it's a hundred and fifty-three. I just was curious as to why the fifty percent drop-off between last year and this year, and it always scares me when I see our, our other revenue down. Like you said, we're getting late in the year, and ten percent's not a lot, but still, it's, it adds up.
A lot of times, it's, it's timing on when we get monies in, and some of that stuff could be where they haven't paid us a, one of the collectible taxes that we're supposed to have. So that, that comes into play on the timing, and, and these reports, they, they vary. Every month, you can see, one month we may be six hundred thousand out, and that's, that's a lot of the reason for it. Well, overall, when you look at how much we've collected, we're only down like thirty thousand dollars on, on that one.
I just couldn't remember what drove line four for us to have the extra revenue, the, versus this year. I didn't know if it was a special circumstance, I just couldn't recall. But again, like you say, at the end, we're ninety-one point four overall versus ninety point one.
Yeah, and we know we're gonna get more state money. That's not reflected on here.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, any other business coming for the board tonight? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, good night. All in favor, good night.